Okay, welcome to a special meeting of the Princeton Historic Preservation Commission, being held electronically via Zoom on March 22, 2022 at 4:00 PM. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place and agenda of this meeting has been transmitted to the Princeton Packet Tom Topics, The Times, The Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton, who has posted it to the municipal website, Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19 coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Historic Preservation Commission will be held electronically via Zoom. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and on website and are maintained throughout the year. Okay, you want to do a roll call? Oh, you're on mute, Elizabeth.
Breezy up there on the Golden Gate Bridge.
Yeah, I'm here.
Mr. Shore, Mr. Undersby?
I'm here or I'm there, okay.
Ms. Satterfield, here. Mr. Shatskin?
Here.
Ms. Howard? Frida, you're muted.
I'm sorry, I'm here.
Mr. Kyle?
I'm here and I'm impersonating Julie. I'm just going to change my name.
You're good, we see you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth, I just brought David Scher over as well, so he's in attendance.
Thank you. Okay, he's here as well. Perfect.
Okay, you got everybody?
David, are you present?
I'm here.
Thank you.
And you got Roger?
I did get him. I got everybody.
Okay, all right. So, this is a special review of the Witherspoon Street improvements. And Elizabeth, do you want to talk about it?
So, I know that HPC had asked for engineering to come back with the final design, which is the Phase 1, which is what engineering is doing today. They'll go over those details and then they will be following up with Phase 2, which is a concept review, which is going to be from Green Street to Franklin Avenue. And then the third project that the municipality will be discussing is the Nassau Streetscape Design Standards and requesting or asking HPC if they feel that they would support an amendment to some of the design standards that's been applied. Because there was some work already done between Bayard and Bank Street. So, from what's been done, I think that there is perhaps an opportunity to improve it if HPC feels that they would support that.
Okay, great. So, Deanna, do you want to give like your PowerPoint or how do we want to do this?
Between Jim, yeah, Jim and I and Tejal, I think the three of us will tag team it. I can show the memo that we provided for HPC or I can provide a plan view. Is there an opinion on which is better for you to take a look at?
Probably the plan view.
Okay.
That would be great.
Let's start with that.
Just a reminder, this is just for Witherspoon Phase 1 that is already under contract, so, okay.
Yep. Okay, so here we go. As you all remember, this project spans from Nassau Street to Green Street. As identified in the memo, in the first block from Nassau to Spring, we have three different types of concrete pavers that will be placed for all of the surfacing. And I may need Jim to give me the details on the sizes of the pavers, because that's a different view that's covered up by the plan view.
The concrete paver sidewalk between Nassau and Green Street will be 4" by 8" for pedestrian use, driveway aprons and the driveways. These pavers will be installed in a running bond pattern. And then we will have concrete pavers manufactured by Unilock Pavers with Umbriano finish and midnight sky color. The size of the pavers will be 4" by 16, which are the permeable, they're going to be, well, the joints will be permeable, and that is the paver sidewalk in a running bond pattern that's parallel to the proposed curb between the curb and the sidewalk. So, this is where the, in the same line as where the street trees will be paved. The joint openings will be permeable so that we have water running in between. And then the vehicular, the cartway will be 6" by 12" by 10 cm thick vehicular ones. They're going to be on a concrete base to carry the load. And they'll also be in a running bond pattern but perpendicular to the pattern of the sidewalk. They are also Umbriano finish and midnight sky color.
Then we also have a white paver in the road section where we have the crosswalk.
Right, and those will be 4" by 12", but they're going to be, right, Tejal, they're turned on the end, so the 4 inches shows up as a line, yeah.
Yeah, the 4 inches is going to be, now, the 12 inches will be parallel to the curb and 4 inches will be perpendicular. That means it's going to mimic a 4-inch white stripe.
Yeah.
Okay. And so then beyond Spring Street, we transition to a botuminous concrete pavement for the roadway area, the vehicular space, and then still maintaining the pavers for the sidewalks. And I don't know if we specifically said it, but from Spring to Nassau, the pavers are all the same color. It's just a different pattern or a different size that distinguishes the three different spaces. I think that covers, I can, I'll scroll through the plan so you can see the rest of the sections. So again, this is the asphalt roadway, yep.
If you could just go back to the drawing before. When you talked about that the pavers are going to end at Spring Street and then you're going to transition to McAdam, is that correct for the street, the cartway?
Correct.
How will that transition at that intersection? Is it going to be curved on the radius or is it just going to stop?
Well, we have curb along the roadway. There is a grade difference in elevation between the sidewalk and the roadway.
I mean, is the pave, how is the pavement going to change? What's, is it going to be right where that?
It's going to be where the curb ramp is. You see the curb ramp?
Yes.
The flare of the curb ramp, that's where it stops. And there's an inlet right next to the curb ramp, so right after the inlet, it's going to stop.
So it's a straight line perpendicular to this curb line where we transition.
And there is another small A inlet right across the A inlet that we just showed you across the curb ramp. So that's approximately right where we are going to stop.
Right here.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. So then, like I said, just moving on so you can see the extent of the project, we end just past Green Street with the new sidewalk and roadway materials. Jim, what's the next thing in the memo?
The next thing in the memo is curbing.
Okay. So, the curbing for the project is tinted concrete. We have not chosen a color necessarily for the color of the curbing other than there was discussion about having it be a contrasting color to the pavers. And the first order of work for our contractor is to set up a 5" by 5" mockup of all three types of pavers and then also to do a mockup of the curb section so that you can see the colors, you can see the sand infill that would be used for the pavers and look at the options that are available.
Okay, so I'm just going to assume that the HPC Subcommittee that worked on this Phase 1 will be involved in that, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So that would be me and Frida and David.
Correct.
Yep, correct. These are special order paver, so they, I think, are working with the manufacturer to get some pavers available to do this mockup. We don't have a date yet from them as to when those will be available.
That all, okay.
What next?
Landscape beds. We originally had green infrastructure bioswales. They've been removed from the project and they're replaced with those permeable pavers, well, permeable joints between the pavers. We're going to be putting in 27 distinct landscape beds with trees along Witherspoon Street at locations that are shown on the landscaping plans. These will be 6" by 10" planters with landscaping around shade trees. The street trees and the understory plantings, including in the planting beds, are all native, non-invasive. What did we settle on? Tejal, I'm going to punt to you because we did meet with our municipal arborist Taylor Sapooter to make sure that everything was going to work out appropriately.
Yeah, so are you asking what type of trees we are using?
The type of trees and the plantings around them.
Yes, so basically, four different types of trees. We are using the hackberry, honey locust, the coffee tree, as well as the ginkgos. And then around them will be the Pennsylvania sage, the cone flowers, the switchgrass and the prairie draca. And every bed is going to look similar apart from the trees that are planted, the four different types of trees that are planted.
So this is, this should be, you should be able to see the plan view of the planting beds now for the first block. Let's see, here is the block, Whole Fish to Paul Robison. And then moving on down at Green Street, it's only tree planting and it looks like it's the two ginkgos, correct? So those, those are the trees, that's the landscaping. What's the next item?
Signage. We're going to put in three street name signs at the corners of Green, Whole Fish and Spring. The signposts will be 4" diameter posts that are black powder coated and they will have the post topper, which is identified as TSB 60, which is part of the Nassau Streetscape Design Standards. The signs will be brown retro reflective background with white letters and all other directional informational signposts are going to be galvanized, but the signs, well, if they're single sided, will have a black finish on the backside of them. And that's it for signs.
So do you have any single sided signs?
We will.
We will.
I mean, we'll have like a loading zone, no parking here to corner. You know, your typical type of roadside signs.
Okay, but no.
Speed limit sign.
Oh, no, not street signs, no, not one sided street signs. These are regulatory signs that have to get up.
So I know that I was not able to attend a lot of the meetings. It was actually a difficult time with my mom. And I'm, so I'm just going to defer a lot of these comments to the Subcommittee because they were involved with all these site meetings and other meetings that you guys had on this and have them talk about if there's anything different than what they recall or if you want to see a little bit more detail on some of the changes that have been made. I would like to see a little detail about that planter area. And if you could just go over that again, Jim, it's going to be an open planting bed, right? It's going to be 6" by 10" with trees and that list that you had, that's going to be pretty much similar from planter to planter.
Yes.
Right, okay. And then is there a special edging on there or is it flush to the sidewalk?
Flush to the sidewalk.
Okay.
No, no specific edging. It's the, the paver blocks will be the edging.
Did I misunderstand that all the trees will be in planters?
No, they'll be in the 6" by 10" planting areas, not in planters themselves, no.
Yeah, what we have is we have a 6' wide area a lot behind the curb that we are using for stormwater management. So a portion of that space will have the pervious pavers. Then interspersed, we will have these planting beds. So underlaying all of it is an amended area that is being used for stormwater management as well as the planting beds.
Okay, and the crosswalks, you said, are white pavers or is that raised?
Deanna, can I, can I share my screen and show them a section of how the planting bed is actually going to look like?
Yes.
Yep, and you can share your screen. And it is a raised crosswalk, correct, Tejal?
Yes, it is a raised crosswalk. I'll come back to that question. So can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
So this is how the 6 feet planter bed with landscaping is going to look like. So this is your roadway, okay? This is your curb, which is 4 inches or 6 inches, depending upon where it is located and how we're trying to meet the sidewalk at the existing building. This is your one foot paver section, which is going to be the pavers with porous joints. And then we're going to have a small, you're not going to see this curb, but there is a small edge curve along with like a metal edge that you can see in here that holds all these together and then holds these pavers to these landscape. But you're not going to, you won't be able to see any of that stuff. That is all below ground with it and then there's going to be soil and mulch and plantings and stuff like that.
Tejal, how recessed is that? Small little area that you showed under 38. How, how recessed is it from the surface of the, is it the sidewalk? Yeah, the sidewalk.
So are you asking the depth of the planting bed?
No, she's asking for the depth of the dimension above that to the ground surface. What is that, about 5 inches, 6 inches?
Yeah, it's about, yeah, plus or minus 6 inches, yes. It's not going to be more than 6 inches, no.
Okay, and then what is, what is the depth of that planting bed?
It is between 2 feet to 2.8, so it's not going to.
That's not a lot of depth for a tree.
For a tree.
No, actually, actually, I'm sorry, it's going to be more, it's going to be within 3 feet, but then we have utilities also that are underneath here.
But it's, but it's important to note, there's no bottom to the pit, it's just.
Yeah, it's.
The dirt.
Correct.
So it's open, okay.
Right.
Right, there's just the edging on the side to keep, keep the roots from traveling horizontally, but they can, they can grow vertically.
Yeah, and they can hold the pavers and the curb on the sides.
Okay.
Thank you. You know, I saw Tom had a question earlier.
Yes, first of all, congratulations on another detail in Copia's plan. You've put a lot of work into this and that's very much appreciated. I have several questions just quickly from my novice point of view. Can I, you're calling this passage a cartway, is it? What is a cartway?
It's, it's another name for the travelway. It's another name for the area that the road, that the motor vehicles travel on.
But service vehicles will be able to get on that road to supply the vendors on that street, right?
Correct, that's why there's the 10-foot service lane.
Okay, so, and that means trucks. Does it mean, does it mean double 18-wheeler trucks if necessary?
It's necessary.
Yep.
It's a WB40 design.
Correct.
So all vehicles necessary to service the vendors will be accommodated, is that it?
Correct.
Okay. When it comes to cleaning these pavers, I'm worried that there'll be oil stains on the pavers and on the white crosswalk and so on. What is the plan to keep these pavers looking trim and washed, presumably power washing sometime?
So we are going to use whatever maintenance requirement that the paper manufacturer is going to supply. It's usually power washing, yeah.
And is the township going to undertake to maintain these pavers in the appropriate way, do we know?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Now, as to then the repairs, this is going to be a paved cartway, as you call it. I'm just sorry to say that the image in my mind in five years is what's happened to Warren Street and State Street downtown in Trenton, whereby they then dig up these pavers to do whatever work has to be done after the fact. And then they use McAdam and don't replace the pavers or bricks and create this rather awful look, which is, is much worse than a straight up McAdam surface. So what is our commitment here to make sure that when we repair these pavers, they are properly replaced and repaired?
So it's the municipality's responsibility to issue permits to utility companies if they needed to do any work. First off, we have a five-year moratorium, so there cannot be any digging unless it's an emergency. And then if we do issue a permit after that five year, then they would be required to reconstruct the area of roadway with the same materials that are in place now.
Isn't that a commitment that any municipality would insist upon, notably Trenton? I'm just worried that after the fact, after all this good work is done and a different regime is in place, then these permits are maybe more slightly done and we would come up with a hodgepodge of repair patching.
Well, I guess that would go back to the elected officials that are in place at the time if they are not requiring that the standards be met.
So I'd just like to note that that's an issue we should minute and stipulate from our recommendation that this has to be maintained to the same high standard of, that is going into the effort. As to trees, are there any flowering trees envisioned in this concept?
They're catching us all off guard because we're not landscape architects.
Exactly.
Wish I had Kendra with me, but I can get you those answers. Out of those four trees, I don't know which ones are flowering or at one time.
Tejal, let Elizabeth go, she's a landscape architect.
Those trees really aren't known for their flowering character. I think they were selected more as street trees to provide a certain canopy within the space. That's my understanding, but they're, they're not considered ornamental trees, which are more the ones that you're talking about, like flower.
So from a historical point of view, I'm very much missing the pear trees. I don't know if those were the best trees, but they were delightful trees to sit under and have the springtime snowfall of the white petals on the sidewalk and so on. And I'm just looking myself, I don't know if it's environmentally appropriate, but if we're talking ginkgo trees, to me, it's a fine enough tree, but it's a rather bland look. And I'm just wondering if we can enjoy, expect to enjoy some flowering shrubs or trees in bloom along this beautiful streetscape.
I can jump in on that. The design concept here was to primarily provide a canopy, trees that are substantial shade trees, and that would live much longer than the calorie pear trees that are out there now and the Bradford pears, which are failing right now and they only have a 30 or so year lifespan and they're not even native species, as you probably know. This plan calls for some flowering shrubs and flowering things in the planting box, from what I understand. So I think the concept is to have some color down at the sidewalk level as opposed to up in, up in the trees.
Are we constrained to be using only so-called native plants, whatever they are?
We're encouraged by the Shade Tree Commission.
So I would just like to make a personal preference there. Master Guards are constantly cultivating new variants from all over, hybrid roses and all the rest. So I myself am not wedded to native plants. If they render what would look to me to be a duller, less impressive look, it has to be a mix, I understand. But I don't want this to be a science project. I would like this to be a public, you know, really enjoyable.
Yeah, we share your concern. For instance, you mentioned the ginkgos. The ginkgos are going to have a brilliant yellow color in the fall, so they're actually quite colorful.
Duly noted, but I mean, it's just a personal preference. I'm demonstrating, I'm not. Well, in any event, I just pass that along for your consideration. Question about impervious cover. Is the design that you're working with going to reduce, I suppose, the impervious cover that the street now constitutes?
Getting for Tejal to answer, but the answer is yes, because we're putting in the porous pavement system. So yes, we are reducing the overall imperviousness of it.
The township is, I'm sorry, is the township, however, taking that into account? When we do our own private driveways and we recommend impervious pavers or other alternatives, these are nevertheless determined to be fully impervious, no matter what design the homeowners are putting up. What's happening with this project is the, and I guess I direct this to Mr. Purcell. Are you considering this whole streetscape nevertheless to be 100% impervious? No matter what are the innovations being put into the street?
From a, from a stormwater design standpoint, the runoff calculations consider even, even pervious pavers to be impervious, to calculate the amount of runoff.
Right.
But the pervious pavers, the pervious system, is then used as a stormwater management system to collect runoff from the surface and transmit it to, in this case, we're transmitting it or transferring it to the tree wells so that the trees are acting as part of our stormwater management system as well.
This sounds like there's some flexibility in the application after you've determined the impervious surface, the use of the pervious pavers and the tree wells to create a relief from the impervious cover, is that it?
Yeah, you could put it that way.
Sorry to ask this, but is that a standard that is going to be applicable around town to homeowners as well?
Yes, it's exactly how I actually describe it to homeowners when they ask.
Okay, that's great to know.
And it's interesting to note that there's a net increase in trees in the plan. Obviously, the tree boxes, planting areas.
Presume that's fine, good. Now, as to the trees themselves, these, some of them will be implanted. This is going to look beautiful. I'm looking forward to this. What happens when one of the trees dies, however? And will there be a commitment to replace the tree with the original specimen so that it's still a harmonious look? And will there be a commitment to replace it quickly so we don't have sort of a broken tooth look on the street?
So we have a two-year maintenance program. Uh, so we have a two-year maintenance program or maintenance bond on the project, if there's anything that dies within the first two years, the contractor will be required to replace it. After that time, uh, we would work closely with the municipal arborist uh, to see how quickly it can be replaced or if he needs to hold it back for a spring or a fall planting.
Okay, so that would be within the natural cycle, so I really, um, salute the good work that's gone into this, um, I'm sure I'm speaking for many others to just say from a citizen's point of view, to try to keep this thing ten years, twenty years from now, looking as good as what you're intending it to be now, without pockmarks or scabs or broken teeth or other such visual, uh, detriments that unfortunately occur when we put a high design into streetscapes and yet we don't commit or are unable to maintain them to that wonderful standard, just my thoughts.
Thank you.
I also wondered, um, if we have any members of the public that have questions, um, Justin, do you see anybody?
Um, David, David has his hand up.
Oh, oh, sorry, David, go ahead.
Um, well, I, I have a bunch of questions and, and some of them relate back to what Tom just put on the table. So for the trees, there's the arborist and there's obviously the, the major commitment and expense of replacing a tree. But part of this design is all about smaller plants, some of which I think are, um, perennials, are there? And, and they go dormant during the winter, what's the, what's the year-round look and what's, and, and who is gonna be responsible for like the gardening aspect of these, of the lower plantings?
Uh, Public Works will be responsible for the lower planting, uh, the materials were selected with an eye towards that understanding that, um, they needed something that was a little bit more lower maintenance in terms of trimming and deadheading and um, you know, the, kind of the more intensive growing season maintenance. Um, so that's, that's the answer for that piece. Um, the trees have I think by the, the trees that were chosen and Elizabeth, maybe you can speak that maybe there is some multi-season interest. Uh, we've got sedges in the planting which can also, um, is multi-season as well. Anything else on that you wanna add?
Well, yes, such sedges actually considered kind of like a ground cover mound, I don't see the list, but you know, it depends on the height of it. Um, so this is the first time I've seen it, I think that you also had switch grass, right? Which is actually considered an ornamental grass, um, and I think I had cone flower, purple cone flower, which is a perennial.
Right, and, and prairie drop seed, another ornamental grass.
Mm-hmm, so, um, I guess I would be interested in the height of that, actually. You know, I'm not sure, um, how close that's gonna be to the trunk of the tree to make it look um, attractive. But I assume that Taylor looked at it and the shade tree commission or the landscape subcommittee, I'm not sure who you had look at it, but I'm assuming there were some other committees that probably looked at it and gave their thoughts as far as that plant material, correct?
No, there has, I, I'm not aware that there has been another committee that's looked at the understory, the trees, yes, everything has gone through the shade tree committee, they've been working on a list of urban tolerant trees, uh, but the understory now that has been between the landscape architect with T and M and our arborist.
Okay.
So we have a lot of master gardeners in town, we have three different garden clubs in town. It seems like it might have been a good idea to get some input or participation from them. Uh, and I'm, yeah, I'm a little bit of a gardener and, you know, the conditions on both sides of the street up and down that one block, they're pretty vast, I mean, some things are gonna thrive and some things are gonna struggle just by location and the amount of sun they do and don't get. And if I'm understanding the list correctly, it's mostly shades of green and then one flowering plant, the, the echinacea?
Yes.
Will there be any flowers?
The echinacea, that's the purple cone flower, and we're not doing annuals, um, we do have.
No daffodils, no tulips, no, um, irises.
No, we will have there, I mean, there are the planter, the flower planters that go on the, uh, streetlights that will still be planted annually, um, and depending on, i- it could through time with the special improvement district. If they chose, they could change the plantings and, um, make it more of an annual system if they, you know, through their governance decide that they wanted additional interest through there. Uh, we do have probably close to a year until this is planted. Um, so we can look at the materials as we get closer to the contractor actually putting in his order for the materials and, and see if there's anything that, um, can be added in for more color.
Reason for no traditional flowers is presumably maintenance, is it?
Maintenance, and I think probably, uh, I don't know how often we get species down here that might eat the flowers, but yes, maintenance is the main, I, main reason.
I'm gonna watch out those deer on Witherspoon. The question that I like to put to our, uh, executive director, who is a landscape architect, Elizabeth, if I may ask you a question
Sure.
as a consultation. I, I don't know so much about this, but I'm getting the impression that this is kind of a brown-green look and that it's kind of, particularly with grasses, and, uh, as I've seen some of these rain gardens coming up, the effort is so eager to try to make it natural plants, but it looks, doesn't look good. Uh, there's no life to it and, and I'm wondering, I'm worrying that, uh, the color scape here is gonna look a little bit more like Arizona to me than will New Jersey, what do you think?
I think that there is a lack of color, if that's what you're looking for, seasonal interest color in the, the, uh, ground level plantings. And, um, I mean, I'm happy to look at this, the first time I've actually seen this, so I'm happy to look at it and, um, you know, give some suggestions. I am concerned about the switch grass because, you know, I, I, I just saw that um, that plant for a minute and I'm not really sure where they're placing it, but switch grass can get kind of tall. You know, and, and I love ornamental grasses, but you know, not every place should be, every plant should be at every place. Um, and what's interesting about ornamental grasses that, is that you can, you know, they have winter interest because I like to see it um, not cut until the spring, so it gives some type of interest there. But at the same time, you know, it's a planter that's what, six by ten, I believe it was said. Um, so depending on how many of these you put in, in the mix of the other ones with the sedge and all that, I'd like to look at it a little bit further. You know, and, and I think that there is an opportunity to be able to provide some um, color in there if that's what everyone wants, and I, I do think that people who have their, um, their, um, properties there, the businesses will probably, uh, will probably go and put some plantings in there as well, that's just what they do.
So this, we're seeing the switch grass right in front of us, that's what I'm talking about, it, it's pleasant.
With the echinacea.
Right, but that's that full sun, Deanna, I was just thinking about them being planted under the canopy of a tree. Those, those flowers need full sun, anything flowering needs full sun, uh, if you wanna have brilliant color, so that's a consideration, if we're bringing in trees, then we probably couldn't have full flowering plants, I mean, Elizabeth will know more, but I, I know I struggle in my garden, so.
Yeah, I mean, there are some that, that will flower that, that is shade tolerant and shade preference, but I don't think what's selected there is gonna meet that need.
Yeah.
All right, well, why don't we work, um, Elizabeth with you and/or the subcommittee if necessary to um, look at the planting?
I have two more questions on the plantings, um, can we go back to the cross-section that you showed, I guess it was of the tree, um, area?
Tejal had that.
Julie, there's a comment in the question and answer, do you wanna wait till the end? Or do you want, you know, while Tejal's getting the drawing?
Um, no, let's, let's, uh, let's see, I'm just.
It has to do with the trees.
Okay, no, we should, we should address it now.
Okay, oh.
It went away.
It did go away, it had a question whether it was gonna be, um, only one gender or was it gonna be male and female trees?
It went away because I answered it, asking the anonymous attendee to provide us with their contact information and we'll have the arborist answer the question, we don't have the answer.
Yeah, Ginko comes in male and female. Um, and they won't reproduce otherwise. Um, it seems to me the planties, if I can interject, it, it's the most changeable of the whole deal, I mean, uh, I don't think we have to get hung up on this, it, I think we get the best shot. If my own garden is any guy that changes every three minutes, depending on weather conditions, more shade and, and my negligence, but apart from that.
Okay, so back to the question with the cross-section. Um, a couple of months ago, at one of the subcommittee meetings, I asked if the gardens were gonna be, or the planted areas were going to be level or whether they were gonna dip down like the, I guess they call them the, the drainage swales. Um, and I was told that yes, it will be like more like the drainage or the, um, environmentally sensitive planting areas, which seem to be a lot of rock or stones and fewer plants. And to that end, and I guess why we're all concerned about the plants and whether they're gonna fail or not, we're gonna have a lot of areas where, um, either brown dirt is gonna be showing or places where litter collects, and I know that there's a former council member that really gets, um, upset by the amount of litter that gets trapped downtown. So I wonder if someone could address that.
So the previous design was when we had, um, the bio swales
Right.
along the road and we are no longer providing bio swales.
Okay, good.
That's where we now have the pervious pavers and the, um, the six by ten planted areas around the trees.
Okay.
So, uh, all of this landscape material we're talking about is in these six by ten, uh, planters. Uh, while it shows to be basically at ground level, uh, I'm sure it's probably about an inch below. Uh, so that surface water on the sidewalk will travel into the planted area. Uh, but it's not significantly recessed like we had envisioned when we had the bio swell design. Uh, again, the planted material, I think, is also chosen in such a way so that there aren't the nooks and crannies for material to get stuck in, garbage to get stuck in. Um, but again, we can look at that in more detail, um, as we get closer to that phase of the construction project.
So I have a quick, quick question about the, just the timing, so when do you think approximately, you know, we, you'd think we'd have a mock-up for the, the pavers?
Tejal, do we have any idea?
So I have, uh, sent the, uh, uh, information, um, to the contractor as to who to contact you for, um, uh, with Unilock Pavers, uh, one thing they said that they would like to do that in their yard. Deanna, if you remember, we discussed about this, I'm not sure.
But what's the timing, though?
He was going to do it. He was going to do it before the start of actual construction, he doesn't wanna buy all the pallets now until it's, it's a goal. Like, you know, everybody is okay with the colors.
Right, I, I, so, short answer is maybe a month, but we also understand these are special um, special manufacturer, so they have to run a, a special, um, block of of these pavers just for this project, um, so we'll have to double check that date. Again, the pavers themselves will not be put in place probably for multiple months. Uh, the first item of work is working on the sanitary sewer underground, then the storm sewer. Um, and then we're finally getting into more of the surface work, so there is time to get the pavers in and, and look at the mock-up.
Okay, and then as far as the street lamps are concerned, are we adding additional or how? How many are there?
Twenty-six or twenty-eight street lights in this, in this section from Nassau Street down to Green Street.
Okay, and then, um, and each one of those lights will also hold hanging plants?
Yes, they have the ability to have the, the planter rings around them like we currently have on the streetlights. They also will have the ability to hold a banner, like a vertical type banner in case there is an opportunity, say, working with the Arts Council, uh, to put vertical banners on them as well.
Okay, so as far as seasonal changes, that is usually where you address that, right?
Yes.
With the, the hanging plants.
Correct, and they'll also have outlets on the poles, so if they so choo- chose, they could continue to have the LED, um, fairy lights on them or if there was ever was a desire to put a, say, a big snowflake on the side of it, there was also, there'd also be that opportunity. No, Eric, okay.
No, no, no place for Eric. Okay, yeah, Eric, yes.
Historically speaking, um, I, I, my recollection in interviewing people, including the last stage driver from Rocky Hill was that the, the trolley, the Johnson Line trolley ended at Spring Street. However, I think when Witherspoon was dug up about thirty-five, forty years ago, they actually found one of the trolley uh, rails, um, up closer to where the food mart or, or the grotto, and I don't know what's there now, but um, beyond that, further up the street, I just keep in mind the fact that there may be interesting archaeological material, um, that will be turned up when you, when you're, you know, addressing utilities, et cetera, and, uh, these deep planting areas. Um, and, and when it swings around to Nassau Street, I interviewed quite a few people about the Bolt Restaurant, which which was where Hinksons was until about twenty years ago, and, um, they actually had a baking business and underneath the sidewalk in front of that building um, are the bake ovens that are still in place, um, so it would be, um, just keep that in mind as well.
Thank you, yeah.
Jimmy Hoffa as well, you might, you never know.
Well, yeah, we'll make sure to collect any artifacts that they may come across through excavation. Uh, yeah, in the next phases, we know that there are still some trolley tracks in a concrete base that we have to work with, so, um, but we're not aware that it's in this section at the, at this time. Who knows, once we start digging, what we'll find.
The trolley tracks are from, um, Wiggins Street down Witherspoon Street.
Okay.
I have a picture of it if you need one, there's also a pole that is across the street from uh, the Witherspoon Street Presbyterian Church, right across on Quarry Street, and it's an unused pole, but I think that Elric told me, uh, it may have been you, Elric, that it was a pole used for the trolley, I'm not sure, but it's still there, I was wondering if it can stay there for historical purposes.
Yes, that, and that's in phase, that's in phase two, and it is, it is planned.
Talking about.
Yeah, yes.
I have a question about the intersection of Wiggins and, um, Witherspoon, if you have that part of the plan, and it's about something relating to the Arts Council, building space.
Okay, just a minute, let me pull that up.
Can I ask, before we leave poles, what about any DAS nodes on the street? I, I didn't see them on the schematics. Or, do we have a bunch? Do we have a bunch of pineapples on individual poles that are gonna be on the street?
Jim, that's you. There's two, right?
There is, there is the one that is on the corner of Whole Fish and Witherspoon that is being relocated across the street by the library. And there is another one proposed to be installed on the west side of Witherspoon Street, in line with the rear of the Bank of America building. Okay, thanks. And that'll be installed during the construction.
And the Crown Castle that's moving from one side of Witherspoon to the other side near Whole Fish, that is coming to HPC still, right?
I don't think so.
No? Okay, is it just, I thought they were working with PSCNG on the pole?
No.
If I recall, that's a double one, that has two.
Yeah, I think they needed.
I don't, okay, I don't know.
No, they're redesigning, I think they're redesigning it with our new pole, so they would be coming to see HPC. That's what, yeah, that's what we've told them to do, but the other one by Bank of America already came through HPC, correct?
Yeah, Roger, that's the one that Jacobs relocated from just up the street a little bit.
Yeah, we, we talked about that. My subcommittee of one.
Right, we gotta give you more subcommittee members, because we lost two of them, so. Yeah, um, as far as the, the service goes, it's all 5G now, is that it?
They have 4G and 5G still, Julie. Sometimes they share it on the St. Paul, but they still function.
Okay, what happens when 6G comes along?
When 6G comes along, we'll no longer need antennas.
Oh.
We might not even, we might not even need devices, because they'll be in chips in our heads.
Right, exactly. Thank you for bringing up this, this map.
Yep, you're welcome.
I'm looking at the lower left-hand corner, and I'm particularly interested in the sculpture that sits in front of the Arts Council. Now, if I may, I'd like to address my colleagues offline with this. I, I have two thoughts that I would like to relate, and I'll do so by letter. My, my, the general content, the, the general part of my thought is that that little corner becomes even a more distinct memorial for Paul Robeson. And I have a few, I have a couple of questions that I like to ask the council members offline relating to that particular sculpture, which I think is, although it's Jacob Epstein, which I think we're all supposed to love, I find it a little underwhelming and positioned in a way that is, it, it doesn't, to me, convey the force and the personality of the man. And since this is a history-related element, and it's gonna now be incorporated in the development here of this part of town, I just want to alert my colleagues that I'd like to take some guidance on this and see if my thoughts are worth considering or completely out of line.
Tom, we've talked about that sculpture for many years. It looks like it's decapitated. We're very concerned about it.
Thank you, that's, I didn't want to say it. Shrunken head on a platter is what I was gonna say.
Yeah, we've talked, we've, we've talked about it for several years, and also if you read the inscription on the plaque, it's not completely correct. So there's several things that we're concerned about. We've been concerned about it for years.
Well, I thank you for bringing that up. I, I didn't want to say it, but that's what it looks to me. It looks like, you know, a shrunken head on a platter. And then the geometry of the Pentagon that's below it is not square. I went over there with my workshop level the other day and proved it. I've been looking, I've been driving by that for twenty years, thinking to myself, there's something wrong with this, there's something wrong with this, and I proved it. So I'll send my letter around and we can have a dialogue about this. Anyway, my point is, this now gives us an opportunity to really showcase Paul Robeson, local hero, in his local vicinity, in a way that can be the beautiful terminal end of the walk that people would have coming down Witherspoon Street.
Well, and there's also the kind of museum that they're making progress on. Um, you know, Kevin Wilks is sort of in charge of that construction, I think, on the corner of Witherspoon and Green.
Yeah, it's a Paul Robeson house.
In the birthhouse, yeah.
Yeah.
So that, that'll also be a, a public, you know, building that I assume will have signage or something.
They'll have a, they'll have a heritage plaque in front of it, and there was a plaque next to the door that's gonna be replaced, put back.
But yeah, so moving on to the, as far as phase one goes, are there other questions, or should we move on to phase two?
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, David. David, I just wanted to jump in real quick, just before your question. I, I also wanted to advise that we've taken the bus shelter out of phase one. The bus stop still remains in the same place where it exists now. We have taken away the bus shelter. If at some point we decide to add shelters in along the corridor, we will come back under separate application. Go ahead, David, sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, that's fine. Will there be electricity to the tree wells? A lot of towns, lights on their trees and stuff. We're not gonna do that. Okay, that's something to think about. The Town Topics recently had a story about the Graduate Hotel wanting to express some concern about one-way traffic in front of their building on Chambers Street. And I just wondered how that impacts one-way traffic on Witherspoon Street, and should that discussion be accelerated some so that we don't end up with changes that might be needed if there's gonna be this one-way pairing between those two streets?
So I thought Jim would jump in, but he's not. The one-way on Chambers Street is only being proposed during the construction phase of the Graduate Hotel. It would not be the long-term operational movement on the roadway. And it's still, it's up to council to determine whether or not they will approve a temporary change for one-way operation.
I just wondered if that was gonna morph into a bigger discussion like things in Princeton often do.
We hope not.
We hope not, too. Can we go back to the, the, the plan showing the intersection at Spring Street, please?
Yes, we can. Share my screen. Okay.
So my, my question is, and I'm not an engineer, but I'm sure you have an engineering answer for this, is with that bump out, don't we end up with a lot of traffic backing up on on Witherspoon in that block, when they all have to merge into one lane? Or am I reading that wrong?
It's only one travel lane. The, the lane next to the curb on the bottom side of the screen is a service lane, so it, it may be, it may be parking. It has not been ordnanced by council yet. But it will be some version of stopping and standing, not through travel.
Right, so it's really only one, one lane wide in that block, so we're not having a bottleneck. We're not creating a bottleneck.
Correct.
And what happens with emergency vehicles or deliveries?
Uh, well, that, this is set up to allow for deliveries. They will use the service lane on the bottom side of the screen. Emergency vehicles, we are working with State Department of Transportation and our emergency services to see if there is a way to add preemption, which is where the emergency services can make a traffic signal change. Work with DOT to see if we can put this equipment on the signal at Witherspoon and Nassau that would allow with very cautious movement, emergency services to travel through this corridor the wrong direction. We're still working through the details on whether or not that will happen. I think emergency services has done that operation since this road was made one-way. But we are working, like I said, to formalize it with necessary equipment, if, if it can be approved by the state.
Well, then, one last comment on that is, and I guess this is just from a pure cost and economics point of view. Going back to how HPC reviews projects, and when we are presented with something that's, you know, radically different, and that we try to figure out whether it's something that can, can exist within the way we review things, sometimes we say that we could, could work with that because it's a reversible change, easily reversed change, something that someone wants to put on a building or do to a building or something that doesn't really change the, the structure or the overall integrity of the building, and it could be changed. So I think that that mindset keeps coming back to me when I say, wow, we're, we're changing the streetscape so much, and we're putting these bump outs and things in. If they don't work that well, you know, that's a lot of money to reverse them. Is there no temporary or movable or changeable barricade system that could work? I, I just keep coming back to that, and I, I think of it from a preservation point of view, that, or, or the population just doesn't like it. They say this, this, this isn't what we like. It just seems like it's a lot of work to undo it.
I have some thoughts on that. I'd say, first of all, bump out isn't that difficult to remove. In fact, in the future, if somebody wanted to remove it, it's really just raised curb area. And the other thing I'd point out is that years ago, when the borough put in the new sidewalk, that, that sort of diamond pattern scoring and the, whatever shape that is, plantings, and it was very different. It was a radical departure, obviously, from what was there, but you know, obviously, particularly within the public right-of-way, it's, the only constant has been changed, you know, for the history of Princeton, going back to dirt roads and wooden sidewalks and loose stone and things like that. So I, I, I think this, these are the kind of things that change over time, but they're not hard to reverse, or maybe there'll be a new design further down the road in the future.
Okay.
Yep, and, and in this case, everything is set up that it's, the only thing that would need to be changed is the, the curb extension at Spring Street. Still the same materials, it would just be dropping the, the raised curb area down to road level and establishing the twenty-two-foot-wide vehicular space. So it's, that's why we got rid of the curb extension at the mid-block crosswalk at the South Tulane Yard to be responsive to that same question or concern.
And, and speaking of that crosswalk, I, I heard a couple of times that somebody characterized it as a, as white pavers. They're not white pavers, Tejal, correct? No, they're just the same pavers as the sidewalk. So in the plan sheet, it probably looks lighter than the roadway associated with it, but that's just to to distinguish it as, as it's the sidewalk pavers, not the roadway pavers.
It was the same gray color, you mean?
Yes.
Okay, because I thought Deanna said white.
Well, it'll have white pavers to make the stripes of the crosswalk.
The four, the four-inch stripe, but we're using pavers instead of paint to, to delineate the, the service lane and, and the crosswalk.
Right. Elizabeth, you've had your hand up. Do, did you have anything?
Yes, Deanna, could you bring up that drawing, which is the intersection at Spring Street? Just a few things. There are a few crosswalks there, and one, are the crosswalks gonna be straight across versus on the angle? I think that that was a discussion. And also, are you, are those gonna be striped at all?
Yes, I'm showing you the construction plan, not the striping plan. So they are straight across. You'll see here is the ADA ramp on near Village Silver. It would come across here. So it's straight across, and then we also have this crosswalk. They would both be striped. But this is not the striping plan, and it may take me a couple of minutes to find it in the plan set.
Okay, no, I just wanted to know, yeah, because it seemed like that, that one on the northeast side looked like it was still coming out on the angle versus straight. And then also up at the Witherspoon, I mean, sorry, at the Wiggins street intersection, too, it looked like it was still coming up for the angle, but you're, you're saying that they're all gonna be straight now, correct?
Correct.
Picking up the striping plan, I just wanted to show it to.
Great, I'm stopping my share.
This is taking, because there's so many plans together, it's taking a few minutes.
I think it was a seventy megabyte file when I opened it up for this meeting.
Wow. And I'm just checking, is there anyone from the public who has a hand raised, or?
There is, Erin has their hand up.
Okay, so.
Justin, yeah, I can't do it with mine. Justin, could you bring them over?
Sure, will do.
Thank you.
Can you see my screen?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're gonna be straight across.
Okay.
Great.
All crosswalks are gonna be straight across. It's just this one that's a little, but they're gonna be straight across throughout.
Okay, yeah, because that one on the northeast side looks, you know, see, oh, 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 no. Go back the other way, Tejal. Yeah, go up at that intersection there. So that one looks, the one, yes, that one, the one that's crossing over Witherspoon Street on the northern crosswalk.
This one, right?
Yeah, yeah, it looks, it, I thought maybe you could pull it back more so it's not going, because it looks like it's actually going on the curve. So I, you know, I just wanted to see, because I know that that was a discussion that we had had in the past, and it was actually probably council as well, that, you know, that they did prefer the straight across versus the angle. So I just want to see if that was still implemented.
Most of the crosswalks are still straight across and perpendicular. There are some that, like this one, that is a little bit slanted because we're working with a lot of utilities, the traffic signal pole and stuff like that, and we have to leave the ADA grades on this one, and this couldn't be pulled up in here and extended. I mean, if that's, yeah, we can, we can change it, but this is the best case scenario, depending upon where the existing signals were.
Right, I don't know that, yeah, that we didn't have a lot of flexibility.
Yeah.
Okay.
This one, this side, and this side, we were not very flexible, because we we had a hydrant, and we had to make sure that the approaches were meeting rates.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'm gonna keep this drawing open, just in case, I mean.
Why don't you stop sharing it so that in case we can see everybody there? Thank you.
Right, and is Erin
Yes.
over here, do you wanna?
Yeah, I just had a quick question, but the bus stop change that was mentioned earlier, just, was there a specific reason to get rid of the bus shelter? In the plan?
Mainly because there were design concerns from HPC that we wanted to spend more time looking into. And so we didn't have the time to put it into the Witherspoon Street project, but we were going to be purchasing bus shelters separate from the contract. So we're not totally giving up on bus shelters, Erin. We still feel that they are important for people that do utilize transit. We just will have it as a separate conversation. But like I said, this construction project's gonna be a year-long project, so we have time to have, to have more discussion with HPC about a, a design that might be acceptable in this area.
Okay, thanks so much. Okay, thanks so much.
All right, thanks. So are there any other questions about this phase one? If not, we go to phase two, which we haven't really even started on.
Julie, can I ask that because we still have to get to Shippo? And when we're ready to go into construction, is there? Maybe Elizabeth, what's the process, the timeframe? I mean, the memo has to go from HPC to Shippo, correct?
Are you talking about phase two or phase?
Oh, phase one.
Phase one.
Okay, you mean like the outstanding items? So I think that we, well, the bus shelter is going to be. Eliminated, obviously, at this point. I think that, let me see what was left over. I think it was like the grout between the. The the pavers, was that correct, Julie? What else was there?
Just the mockup, which, you know, we're not really sure when that's going to happen.
Well, I think you see, I texted the contractor while we were talking and he is. He has reached out and he's asking for a delivery date, so he's saying anytime between now and April twentieth or the thirtieth. He doesn't have it, but it should be within a month.
Yeah, there there were samples, I know that Ian told me that were delivered, there were like two or three after the last meeting when the subcommittee talked about the grout. So maybe the subcommittee could come in and look at those and give, you know, select one of those colors, because I think that. I think Frida, you were recommending that it be a color that's more in line with. The color of the pavers, if I recall correctly, and then you can look at that. And again, with the mockup, I think there's an opportunity to be able to change it. But at least you can say, you know, that this is the color that we've selected at this time, but there will be a mockup. Before we, you know, before you confirm that, you know, to go ahead with that.
And I think even with with the mockup, he could give us the look of two or three different, you know, grout.
Right. I think that's a good option.
It will save a lot of time, I think. So if he uses maybe, I don't know, nine pavers. And use, you know, put three different colors in between several of them, I think we would be able to see. Get a good look.
Okay, and then I think that that the memo could also reflect that, that these are the three colors there, we're going to be reviewing a mockup.
Right.
Okay, was there anything else that was outstanding?
I think it all involved the bus shelter. So that was, with that out, I think that's it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, so so our memo to you was modeled on the memo that you had sent. Last year to Shippo. So I think you could hopefully just take a lot of what we had in our memo and then carry it forward into yours.
Right, and as far as the timing goes with the, our memo to Shippo. Would we wait till after the mockup for that or?
I think we should do it before and and just note in there that there will be a mockup.
Okay, all right, so, and also Ed is here, Elizabeth. You know, I think we have the the information here that we can generate a memo, you know, fairly quickly.
Okay. And so the subcommittee can schedule a time where you guys can come in. Deanna, I know that with all the moving in the engineering department, were you able to find all those samples of the grout?
Uh, we got new ones delivered, I think, or or Ian found them. I have, I have six of them on my desk.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Very good. So we'll coordinate with the subcommittee to see when they can come in and look at it.
Great.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
So are we ready to go to phase two?
I am, if you are.
Okay.
Great. Okay, I'll share my screen. So for those of you, I guess, maybe Leighton and Shirley. You're seeing, I'm pretty much giving the same presentation that I gave at the Witherspoon Jackson meeting, it's just. Condensed for what's specific for this group, so let me share my screen. Okay. So we're now in the design phase for the next. Two sections of Witherspoon Street, so that takes us from Green Street. Really down to Valley Road. Our next construction project will be green to Franklin. But in terms of design, we are really trying to look at the entire corridor from from green. And depending on some of the design concepts, we may be doing a little bit of modification to the. Northern end of phase one, but I'll get into that. But really trying to look at the whole corridor down to Valley Road, so. It's obviously a different area than what we had in phase one, which was much more uptown, central business district. We are looking at mixed use residential business area. Where we've got two eleven foot travel lanes and an eight foot parking lane, we've got some planted edges. Of the roadway and then we've got sidewalks, so. We have two different concepts that we are currently looking at. One of them would be, as I think Justin calls it. The existing roadway improved. And Justin, if you ever want to jump in and help give any of this presentation, please, please do. He was very good at. At our Witherspoon Jackson meeting. But again, basically, it's maintaining and improving Witherspoon Street, but also addressing some of the speeding and safety concerns. That we have heard quite often about crossing Witherspoon Street. You want, you want to jump in, Justin?
Sure, I'm happy to.
Okay.
It's a little weird coming from, you know, you're used to me as a disembodied voice on this meeting, so I'm coming from behind the curtain this time. But like Deanna said, there, this really isn't a radical concept compared to what's out there right now. It's still involves shared driving lanes. It's still involves, you're going to have your sidewalks. But we're, we're looking to add some features that really make it. You know, safer for pedestrians, but also safer for people that are on bicycles, that are in cars. Go into the bus by slowing down those cars and making it more, you know, we use things like bump outs and raised crosswalks. To not only physically make it so that. People in cars see pedestrians, but also just, you know, kind of shift. That the street is not just for cars, but it's also for for the people that are crossing, whether it's their neighborhood or whether they're going to the bakery or restaurant or whatever. So as you see in this section, there's actually only about four or five crosswalks today, depending on how you you count. So we're looking to triple that. Someone had mentioned completing the crosswalk or completing the box. So places where there's, for some reason, only a crosswalk on the north side, we're looking to add some to the south side. Quarry Street, for example, there, there's, there's nothing right now and I'm not really sure the reason why. And over by between the Chinese restaurant and Mexican grocery store, parking's on one side, but there's no crosswalk. So, you know, naturally, people are just going to cross from their car to the Chinese place. And it gets pretty unsafe. I saw someone last Friday, you know, sadly, it's almost like taking your life in your hands to get your Chinese food. We're looking to add three raised crosswalks. These make it so you you more or less just walk across the street on one level instead of kind of dipping down from the sidewalk. Into the roadway, then back up. They also slow down cars. And then we're looking to add bump outs and the point of these is, and one would be for the new Shirley Court crosswalk. The point of these is to bring the pedestrian out so you could see them over the parked cars. It also shortens your distance. So instead of walking across thirty feet, you're now only going to twenty two, and while that might not seem like much. It's, you know, cutting your trip in a third. We're looking to add some raised sidewalks on private side streets, so places like Witherspoon Lane and Shirley Court. I think there's one more that I can't remember off the top of my head. And Tory Lane, yeah. Those would look like what was just put in on Bank Street. So you, again, it's almost like a raised crosswalk where you walk directly across. As I mentioned, the bicycles would continue to share the roadway with the vehicles. We're looking to upgrade the sidewalks where possible, maintain the healthy trees that are out there, which means some will be removed. On the advice of our arborist. But we're looking to add trees on both sides of the road and we have exact numbers after I show both concepts. I'm looking to add pedestrian street lighting, not just those upper poles. That you see out there now, but Deanna will show those. I think they're kind of fancy ones. Thirty five percent of the on-street parking spaces would be removed for things like the crosswalks and the bump outs. So we're looking to lose about eleven of those with this design. And then people's, you know, the people that live on Witherspoon Street, which like someone I think said before in this meeting, if that was another, includes me, but not in this section. They would still have a place off-street for their garbage cans and their recycling cans every week. You can move on, Deanna. And so this is something of an example. It doesn't include all those features I had mentioned, but we're also looking to re-green some of the spaces that. Concrete's been put in over the years. To your left would be where Delicioso Bakery is now. You'd actually kind of in this picture be standing in one of the new crosswalks. There's not one currently. So this doesn't tell the full story, but I think the next segment will show more of that. So we're starting over by the Ropson House. There'd be a new bump out added over there. Like I said, you could kind of see how. Instead of, you know, being stepped back behind where the parking spaces are, you'd be standing. More so where the where the cars can see you and then take your your legal, you know, right to cross the street. Away from the car, because we know cars, sometimes it's five, six, seven cars going by. You know, frankly, this might make a lot of my coworkers' commutes longer, because I think coming down Witherspoon Street would be a lot of the municipal employees. As well as others. There are also, you'll see the green shared arrows in the street to signal to. All the different types of road users that that bicycles could be in the street. There's a raised crosswalk in front of the Presbyterian Church. And you'll see there what I mentioned before, how it kind of goes up six inches on each side, flattens in the middle for ten feet. Slowing down the cars and giving you a path across. Moving on, so let me mention the X's on the trees are are those trees that the arborist and our engineers have looked into. Some would have to go because of of their status, you know, their health level. But then the ones that are outlined in white or just outlined would be staying. And then the ones that are in green would be new ones put in. You'll see on the neighborhood side, it's smaller trees to go under the utility wires. Assuming that they stay and that's something I'll mention more about it in in the next phase. So those are designed to be under those wires, whereas the other side, the cemetery side, has more of those larger shade trees. Right where Deanna's cursor just was. Is where that's between. That's actually on the. It's not, it's not going to the Chinese restaurant, it's the opposite corner, but it's roughly that area. Where people already, you know, you have to park on the neighborhood side and walk across. It's just kind of human nature. There's a bump out there as well, and then if you look over to Shirley Court. That's where one of those raised pedestrian crossings would be.
And and one thing to point out here is that we do show two levels here. You have an upper level sidewalk that's adjacent to the steps to the businesses. And then you have a slightly lower area. Which is needed because we do have that grade change and it can accommodate people that are getting out of parked cars.
Yeah, I think that's all I got for that section. And then, moving on, we'd be adding the crosswalk in front of the Mount Pizga Church that currently doesn't exist. You'll see the bus stops will are staying where they are, but they'll be outlined better. Moving down a little further, there'd be that new crosswalk going to where Delicioso Bakery is. And that tree is actually going to stay.
Yes.
Even though it has an X on it, we figured out that that's a healthy one and, you know, helps people sit over there and provides a lot of shade. Continuing on. So over here is, so the bus bus bay would stay there in front of the Pennell Center. The existing bus shelter would stay there. That area is. If you're ever out there, when school lets out, that's where high schoolers and middle schoolers cross, you know, that crossing guard has his work put out for him. So we're looking to add a raised crosswalk directly in front of the Pennell Center. And then there's also a bump out in front of Franklin Ave, parallel to Witherspoon Street. So this is where the parking kind of turns to the other side, where the park is and Avalon. And then there's another bump out. I think, is that a new crosswalk location and a new raised crosswalk?
Yes, it's, I think so. I think there's only the existing crosswalk on the northern side.
And and that's an area too, where right now, when you try to cross those two existing crosswalks. There's parked cars on both both sides of you. So a lot of times it's hard for a driver to see someone standing there. So when I say drivers don't stop, I don't. You know, not everyone out here is nefarious or anything like that. A lot of times they truly can't see, you know, I'm five foot ten and they can't see me. So kids or someone in a wheelchair or someone else, it's even, you know, less of a chance that they stop. And then that ends roughly at Miss Kim's Deli. And then concept B, which unintentionally, it's concept B, but you could think of it B for bike lane. You see, there is a southbound bike lane edit. While the roadway stays about the same, you know, two travel lanes and then one parking lane. The parking lane would have to be, have to handle a lot, so there's going to be kind of islands where the trees. The utility poles, if they stay, signs and other things all go in. This came out of a meeting with the Bike Advisory Committee and some council members about a week ago. So we're still working through some of the kinks here to squeeze everything in. The northbound lane, so going towards the municipal building, bicyclists would still, would stay on the street the way they do now. And the reason behind that is because that's downhill, so you're going faster. So you get the bike lane on the neighborhood side where you're going uphill and presumably going slower. Yep, and you go on. So a lot of those things that I had just mentioned, like the edit, like more crosswalks for edit. We'll see those in a second. The island bump outs are needed for, you know, to take the things that are currently kind of in a buffer zone over there. That serves a lot of purposes, but would go away. The raised sidewalks would continue on those three private side streets. As I mentioned, that's how the bicycles would operate. And sidewalks would be upgraded where we can, pedestrian street lighting would be similar. Now, to accommodate all this, the trees on the west side, so the neighborhood side, would have to be removed. The existing trees. New trees would be added in the, those islands where possible. And that's something actually I want to get Elizabeth's input on a little later, because she had some good comments at Saturday's meeting. The Witherspoon Jackson Neighborhood Association meeting about that. On the east side. There's a buffer lane or a buffer, kind of mostly green, sometimes concrete area between the sidewalk and the street. That's going to be minimized, again, to fit some of this, to fit the bike lane and everything else in it. Seventeen on-street parking spaces would be removed. Compared to, I think it was eleven on the last one and thirty one that are, that's existing. And then there's still kind of a question about what's going to happen with people's garbage cans and recycling bins. So we don't want them in the, in the sidewalk. I, I guess they'd have to go in the parking lanes or the bike lane. So there's that. Here are just some design. Here are just some design inspirations or examples. The one to the left, I think we're still figuring out what level the bike lane would be at. If it'd be the same as the street, if it'd be the same as the sidewalk, or if it would be somewhere in between. But generally, that's how it would look from, you know, building or property, then sidewalk, then bike lane, parked cars, and area where you drive your car. In the watercolor, upper right, you see kind of how islands with trees in them would function once they're fully mature. Then the, the islands provide opportunities in both cases, but particularly in this one, to put bike racks, garbage cans, poles, everything else we need, meters, fire hydrants. So now, moving on, moving down the street again from the Robeson House like I just did. There's a bump out in front of the Robeson House towards green. Oh, let me mention the most important part before I get ahead of myself. So towards the bottom of your screen, the kind of speckled area would be the bike lane, a four-foot-wide bike lane. Or the gray area, excuse me.
Correct, yes.
Right next to the sidewalk, which is the speckled area. As you could see, there's some driveways that I think we still need to figure out what would happen with them if they slant down into the bike lane or in the sidewalk area. To the upper right of where Deanna was just showing, you could see some of these islands that would have to bump out some islands where you'd have to put the, the streetlights, the garbage cans, you know, the, the fixed garbage cans, the, just about everything you see out there now, fire hydrants and things like that, street signs, some sort of parking kiosks for the meter parking. And then, the one thing you might notice is that where the bike lane is right now is where the utility poles currently are. So it's, there's still a question of if they can be put underground. We had a discussion earlier today with PSENG. And if they are able to be put underground, then you have to put some sort of, those like kind of big green boxes, the transformers or conduits or whatever the correct term was. So those would then have to be placed in the islands. Moving down the street again, there's still that crosswalk going to, over by Shirley Court and by the Chinese place. There's still the raised pedestrian crossings on the side streets.
And we, we would still have a two-level situation with the sidewalk here again, where the sidewalk is on the upper elevation and the bike lane would be on the lower side. And we've protected it a little bit here at, with the crosswalk. So somebody using this crosswalk still has to walk through and around the, the bike lane to get onto this, the pedestrian side of this.
And actually, before we move on, one thing I noticed earlier in the day, some of the hedge rows that you see out there now would need to be removed. If you look, 120 Witherspoon and elsewhere, you know, again, we're, we're kind of constricting space here. And those might need to be taken out or will need to be taken. Moving down again, you see one of those islands for, for the poles and everything else. The added crosswalk in front of Mount Pizga Church. The bus bays stay similar to how they were in the last one. And this is kind of an interesting block because you could see, th- this is the block between McLean and Lidle, where the school is on the corner, Hillier Studio is in the middle. And there's that kind of ally of trees. The bike lane would involve, you know, taking out one side of the trees to put the bike lane there. So that's kind of how, when I've been walking around, I've been kind of conceptualizing this. If you want to go walk down there, that area where there's a bus stop, those trees, other things that would be, you know, the, the edge of the sidewalk would lead to a, a bike lane over there. There's, yep, there's still, there was the crosswalk at Delicioso. Moving on here, the, there's still the addition of a crosswalk over by Pennell. And there's a raised one over, I'm not sure why they swapped from earlier, but they did here. And then there's, what's circled in red is a pretty big question about, could a bike lane go here? So this is where the parking switch is. So, there's a thought that maybe we switch the parking in the next phase and in front of Avalon to the other side. Right now, if the poles don't go underground, they would be directly in the center of the bike lane. So obviously that's not feasible. There are some questions too about how the raised crosswalks would work over here. Would you go down from the sidewalk into the bike lane and back up to the raised crosswalk and over? So there are things like that that we have to figure out as well. And then here's a little more about those concepts. So here's a comparison. You know, like I said, we're, we're beating the box and adding striped crosswalks where we can, adding those raised crosswalks in both concepts, removing parking spaces in both concepts to a different degree. And let me just add, when we figure out where the poles and trees and everything else is going, I think those parking spaces in Concept B might be lower than the seventeen. There are thirteen trees removed in Concept A, twenty-seven in Concept B. And again, that includes all the ones on the neighborhood side and most of the ones on the cemetery side that wouldn't have space anymore. That being said, forty trees would be planted in Concept A for a net gain of twenty-seven there, while thirty-three would be planted in Concept B for a net game of, gain of six. And then there was the question of the garbage cans, where they're going to go. Down towards the bottom left are all those kind of things that we still need to think about, particularly with Concept B.
I think, I think that's it. Then we had just some different images that we had shown of the different trees. So I'll stop sharing unless we need it for example purposes. So, like I said, yep, go ahead, Tom.
Oh, sorry. I, I didn't conclude. I would like to ask a couple of questions.
Okay, I was just going to say, we have these two working options that we are exploring more. Part of our design process was to discount utility poles while we were investigating whether those, the electrical and telecommunications could go underground. As Justin mentioned, we had a meeting and I'm not sure, I'm not confident that we can, we can jump over the hurdle that is involved with putting the utilities underground. So we do need to now take a look at these options and factor in the impact of utility poles and, and looking at which is the best option to meet as many of the goals that we've heard for the corridor.
And so, so just to reiterate, if the poles go underground, you have about four blocks of a bike lane resulting in a shared lane before you get to Robeson Wiggins. If they don't, you have about three blocks of a bike lane before going back to the shared one and then eventually going to the one way. And, sorry, Tom and Julie, but Elizabeth, could you just touch upon it, if the poles don't go underground, how this kind of island concept works with trees?
Yeah, so, sure. So, you know, if the, if the above utilities remain above ground and they have these, these planting islands that kind of go, I guess, is it kind of going in the bike lane area? Whatever. So it goes into like that cartway area. I think their thought was you could put the, the trees and light fixtures in the same area, but you can't. That's a conflict. I mean, trees need soil volume and lights don't want the foliage of trees to impede on their distribution of foot candles. So they're never next to each other. They're actually, they're using space where the pole is in between the trees or vice versa. And as Justin talked about, you know, they've got, so with that said, you're going to have to have more of those islands created within that streetscape. And it's just to mention, there's other site features that need to be added like fire hydrants, trash cans, or, you know, whatever. So that, again, is going to take up more island space, which is going to take away from the amount of parking. So I think that that's going to really impact the businesses if you're going to be taking that many parking spaces away just to do that. And it's going to be like the serpentine in and out, in and out with these islands, you know, placed strategically along that street. So I, I find that that is problematic from a design point of view. And I think that that's a public works nightmare too, trying to plow in between all those little islands.
Yeah, I, I agree with Elizabeth. I also want to point out that, you know, when you talk about bike lane, you have e-bikes, you have electric scooters, you have like regular scooters, you have all kinds of stuff. You have a lot of kids in the area because a lot of the kids from the high school are walking down the street. You may have kids going the wrong way on the bike lane. I don't know. I just feel like it's going to be a little more chaotic than you might intend it to be.
Skateboards too.
Right, yeah. There's a lot of different modes of transportation.
And I think that,
Yeah, I think, Tom, you had a question. I'm sorry for cutting you off earlier.
So, this is a pretty bold plan and as with the phase A, you've put a lot of work into this, which I really appreciate. I think we have to take, and before I start, Ribeiro Marks, can I ask Shirley, has this been discussed with the Witherspoon Jackson neighbors?
Had a meeting last Saturday. Not many from this community were there, but I assume they are aware, yes.
All right. Well, I don't know what the reaction was, but I'm just going to relate some thoughts of mine. I live over in Riverside, but I'm in and out of that area a fair amount. And my physician is in that area, so this, first thing to say is that this is going to have an impact on traffic. And any plans that we're talking about here should be reviewed by the Traffic Bureau of Police. And I would like, if we, as we roll down this road with you, to hear from Sergeant Murray or, and his successor from Traffic Police. Because anytime we squeeze the balloon in Princeton roads, the traffic inevitably flows elsewhere. This plan with its raised sidewalks, with its bump outs, with the snarring, with the spike paths, is going to constrict what is a major road, unfortunately, in Princeton. That road gets us from Nassau Street over to Cherry Valley Road and 206. And that has to be considered because if you squeeze that down too tight, then traffic is going to move over to Jefferson and be running up and down Jefferson or it's going to come into the Witherspoon Jackson neighborhood and run up and down the street on which is the Baptist Church. I can't remember the name of that street, the Up and Down Street. The John Street? Yeah, all right, well, that is my point though, because if you, if you squeeze down Witherspoon Street, which is the natural flow, historically speaking, of traffic, where John Witherspoon himself rode his horse from Tusculum to the university and so on, and turned it into what could look like a residential street, that's going to have a traffic impact. That's thought number one. Thought number two is that, I don't know how to say this artfully, but this is looking a little bit to me like phase one. And it's sort of bringing that look and feel down the street into the Witherspoon Jackson community, which changes for me the look and feel of Witherspoon Jackson. Bump outs, tree bays, and so on. These are all nice. They're very nice on Witherspoon Street off of Nassau Street, but they're not quite, to me, in character with the traditional sense of the Witherspoon Jackson Street, the, the section on that street as I know it, when I'm in and out of those streets and so on. I do take the point about the children and the foot traffic and so on, and we need to have traffic safety. But I do go back to my first point, which is that this is a major road, unfortunately, for us in Princeton. The third point related to that is somewhat cautionary. And I may be out of line to say this, but if we move that down in, with that kind of development, I do worry a little bit that this sort of accelerates whatever gentrification remains to occur in the Witherspoon Jackson area. It continues to gustify the area, all for that. And this is why I really would like to hear from the Witherspoon Jackson folks to see if this is resonating with their aspirations for the community. But I foresee that this could put more, more pressure on with outsiders who want to come in and invest the area, capture the urban feel, you know, and then gentrify the area yet further. That, that's a historically sensitive subject in that neighborhood. And I wonder if this kind of a plan might indeed contribute to it. As to the parking places, aren't we, aren't we needing more parking places, not fewer, in this neighborhood? So that residents who are tightly positioned there and the merchants can have their access and be able to park. So, these are just some of my preliminary thoughts. I don't have the benefit of any other understanding. And I have a high appreciation for the amount of effort that's going into this thoughtful project. These are lots of interesting ideas. I'm just having an initial reaction that this looks a little bit overdesigned for this part of town. And now on this particular street, we must take into account, particularly the traffic patterns as they affect all of Princeton, if we are to tightly constrict Witherspoon Street, as well as then the subsequent economic effects that this could lead to. These are my thoughts.
Tom, I just wanted to follow up on your comment about congestion and traffic circulation. And maybe Julie and Elizabeth can, can clarify this. I'm not sure traffic congestion is really something the Historic Preservation Commission is supposed to be addressing. I mean, you're a design review and, you know, in terms of the heritage of the, the neighborhood, I understand that, the built environment, the character. Traffic congestion is something that our engineering department and our traffic engineers are looking at pretty closely. So I don't know if Elizabeth and Julie want to talk about what you all should be looking at and what you don't have to worry about because other groups and professionals are looking at it.
Well, I mean, I do think, I do think that the, the landscape issue is a significant one for historic preservation, because I do think the landscape, you know, kind of goes hand in hand with the architecture of the site, so.
Yeah, I was asking about traffic circulation and congestion.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, well, what I'm saying is that the emphasis, our emphasis should be on, you know, like changing, like we're talking about taking out hedges and that kind of thing. And I think that's more of a historic preservation issue, whereas, yeah, whether we have parking or not, I don't know if that's as much historic preservation. But, I mean, we all experience the streets, so we're going to be honest. Yeah, Elric?
I, I think both concepts are, I mean, a lot of thoughts gone into it, but it seems to me there's a certain amount of overthought. I, I, of the two, I just find the one with the bikes to be, to be unworkable. The whole idea of having to go from one side of the street to the other is an open question, one way or the other. It's going to be, it's, 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 it's difficult and it's not going to be easily solved. There, you've got two or three different speeds going at once there. And particularly putting the parking right between traffic and the, and the bike lane seems to me to be very difficult. The, the idea of opening a passenger door and having a, a bike passing or passing another vehicle, another scooter or something is crazy to me. And, and also the places where the bikes, it seems to me, are most likely to be going are the schools. And I, I, I have to wonder whether or not the, if there's a bike lane, it should be on a less traffic road like Moore Street or Jefferson, or, or, or even though it's narrow, John Street. I just don't, I, I, I just think it's, oh, there's too much going on there. The, the, the island's butt out into the street, it parks. Island's butt out into the street, it parking is gonna be difficult. Um I'm with Tom on this one. I think, I think that um what's there is more workable than either of these solutions.
I will just note, Elric, one thing we didn't say is that this southbound bike lane would be paired with. Striping on or markings on John Street. So you could go northbound on John Street. And then southbound on um Witherspoon Street.
Uh Tom, to um come to your point, uh we have talked about uh how sensitive we are to the historic neighborhood. And um I think that everyone understands that. I remember saying that it was like a promenade at one time. And I think that um people have heard this and uh they'll work on seeing that. The Witherspoon Jackson is is honored.
Well, and to Shirley's point, I think, I mean, I I would like to see more landscaping, more trees. Um and you know, not, and not that I'm against bike lanes by any measure, but I just feel like. Because there's so many different modes of transportation and especially I know how the kids are when they get out of school and they're all over the place. I just don't think it's gonna be as orderly as you think it'll be. Um, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, Elizabeth.
Um yeah, just to kind of piggyback on what Shirley said, I know that when we had met with some select people. From the neighborhood staff and um some council, when we were just kind of talking about the evolution of a concept plan. Um, one of the comments that was, you know, that resonated was that this was a promenade. And they would like to see that come back. That was sent to be like a very key uh important aspect for the neighborhood. And um you know, the best way to honor that promenade is with street trees. If you have a bike lane on one side, you're not gonna have street, your street trees on that side, so it's gonna only be on one side. And I don't think that that is a good um street improvement design. Um so, um and I think that these other components that are coming in. Um, you know, like like the bike lane, uh things like that, and and maybe even some of the the bump outs. I mean, it depends on which one you're looking at. Um I think that it 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 makes it busy and complicated. I think that people are gonna ride bicycles no matter what. I think if you create a bike lane. You're actually asking for more conflict. I mean, you've got people, you've got cars, you've got buses, and now you got bicycles, you've got skateboards. You got electric scooters, electric bicycles. So I think that it actually becomes more dangerous for the the neighborhood.
Actually, this raises a nice point, the promenade. Would we wish for Witherspoon Street also to be a parade route, as it was recently? I guess there was a recent parade up parade from town municipal complex into town. Uh that might, if we were to think like that, then all the accoutrements on a new Witherspoon Street, as are suggested. Might make it difficult to have a classic parade up Witherspoon Street.
Uh Julie, David Scher has his hand up.
Yeah, yeah, David, sir, go ahead, David.
He's on mute right now. I'm not sure if he knows.
Hey, David.
Okay, um going back to one of Tom's earlier comments, uh I I think, actually, I would, I would say that. Um, the traffic flow, the impact that um might happen from these changes to the. To the road and its flow is very, very much a preservation issue. Think of half the arguments around the country over the last fifty or seventy-five years. It's what. Um, traffic engineers have done or not done to cities. I I think that um it's a very valid point. Um and I think it needs, it it's worthy of consideration and it, thank you.
There, Julie, you also have Bob Hillier with his hand up.
Oh, oh, yeah, sorry. I didn't see that. Uh please, go ahead, Bob.
Uh I've just promoted him to a panelist, so he should be over in a second.
Okay.
So can I just interject something while Bob's coming over? Um I mean, I understand that traffic is a big issue. There's a lot of kids there. Uh who go to the center and they go back to sport to school, um John Witherspoon High School and things like that. And you know, I think that what is always so understated but so important is that trees create a canopy. That's low traffic down. It is a traffic calming method. And the wider you make that road also um does not, does not help that. So the narrower road that you have, if you don't have that bike lane and those trees are able to be closer to the edge of the cartway. That's also gonna help um slow traffic down, you know, um add towards promoting um slowing the vehicles. And creating a a a human scale canopy for people as they're walking down the street. Sorry, Bob.
No, that's all right, Elizabeth. I just wanted to say that I think that putting the bike lane in. Um it's a, a lot of it's already been discussed about people, the passenger getting out of their car as a bike comes along. I think that the raised crosswalks are gonna slow the traffic down. And I know that when I go up and down Witherspoon Street, and believe me, I have a lot of respect for bike riders. But I I'm really careful with 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 when there are bikes on the, on the road and I slow down. And I think that um to have that, what I'm really worried about is that it's gonna change the character of Witherspoon Street. And make it much more urban. You all have cited all the complications that you're gonna have with the tell, the the power poles and. The fire hydrants. And right now, the garbage cans sit on the sidewalk where there isn't that. Uh planner strip uh for trees, especially uh where the um where the little restaurant is. Um uh Chopin's uh restaurant. And so I just think the bike path is. Is going there is just a a bad thing. And I think that Moore Street and Jefferson Road are number one. Light, much lighter trafficked and um and can accommodate. If you can get from Valley Road up Moore Street or up uh Jefferson Road um to town. Uh just as easily as going on Witherspoon Street. But I also think that these bike paths, uh the crosswalks are gonna slow the traffic down. And uh that's gonna be a big help, because right now there are cars going forty miles an hour uh on Witherspoon Street. And um I think this, that's, I'm all for, I'm all for what you're proposing, except the tr- the bike track, uh the bike path. I just think it's too much and it's gonna change. The historic people, when they made it a historic district. If you read the report, they said the most important thing isn't the buildings, it's the character of the street. And you are gonna destroy the character of Witherspoon Street with that bike path. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I I second that motion. I think the um, the the bike lane is really gonna change the street. Character a lot. I don't know. I really feel like option A is a lot better, easier. Um just, you know, more in keeping with the the promenade idea that Shirley has.
Uh Julie, Michael Floyd now has his hand up. Would you like me to move him over?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm wearing a few hats today.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um. I missed the uh neighborhood meeting on Saturday, so this is the first time I've seen it. Um Deanna did send me the actual um drawings on Saturday or Sunday, I guess she did. Uh so I did see it then. I I do worry about the bike lane. Um and I won't repeat what some others said. Also, the concept that. John Street would be the south-north route. If you're, if you're a kid, you're gonna ride north on the bike bike lane too. Um, so I think that will make it even more um busy or or chaotic. Um, I do, you know, also worry, I know. Um Justin mentioned on both concepts, you have to figure in the driveways. Um and especially the driveways also will amplify the activity with the the bike lane. Or the lack of flow or whatever. Also, one brief comment on um. Um, if you could put up the Quarry Street, uh Deanna. Um in front of the church, the Quarry Street Witherspoon.
Yeah, I'll go back to example, Concept A for that just a minute.
Yeah, Concept B.
All right, let me zoom out here. Second. Hey, just a second. Share screen. Witherspoon Presbyterian, is that what you were looking for?
Yeah, um right at the um, the proposed uh crosswalk, raised crosswalk there. I see on, right in front of the church, you have a a a green area. Which is there now also. And you might consider in talking to the minister if you want. Or or Shirley, it's her church, whatever. Uh if that green could be concrete. As we all know, churches, at the end of service, people tend to congregate. It's a social area. And it might, you know, at least from my view, be a little more functional if right uh. Uh that green area, right, starting at the crosswalk, yes, right there, is is concrete. Um, that's, that's a thought. Um. And I had one last thing on Concept B, but I think I just forgot what I was gonna say. Um, if I remember, I'll raise my hand again.
Thank you, Michael. We will make that change. Thank you.
Well, that's just a recommendation for consideration.
Yeah, we we talked about it in the past and um, yeah, we'll update that. It makes sense.
Okay.
And I, and and Michael, I think we even discussed it when we did that walkthrough on that Saturday. About having a congregation area right there.
Yes, yes.
So would you like um, like, one by one individually, people say whether they like. A or B or none of the above? Or, or do you feel like you have enough feedback?
Well, it sounds overwhelmingly like we're leaning towards A. Um, it may be helpful, anybody that's available on uh March twenty-eighth to come to the council meeting to have that. Uh put on the record for us. Um. I think that's probably, Jim, right? I think that's probably good at this point.
Yeah, I didn't hear anybody that liked B.
No, um in terms of, if I can digress a little bit and get into details. Just so we, we on the design side can start thinking about it. In terms of materials. Would you look to continue some sort of a paver sidewalk? Or would we be concrete sidewalks, uh hopefully not asphalt? Um, what, what, so we can start thinking about material selections. What are we thinking um for sidewalks?
So Elizabeth, you have your hand raised. Did you wanna say something?
Yeah, I don't wanna specifically address the sidewalk, but I do wanna kind of address the Witherspoon Jackson neighborhood. And the the Witherspoon Street um that goes through the neighborhood. Um I know that there were some discussions in the past, should we bring up the same lighting up here? Should we bring the same pavers? Um and I think what I'd like the commission to really think about is, is this is actually a neighborhood. A neighborhood that had business where they were self-contained. And I think that it is a unique district of its own. I don't think the lighting in Central Business District is appropriate for this lighting. I think it should be different. Whether the pavers be the same or whatever, but but I just would like the commission to think about the fact that this is really not. Central business. This is Witherspoon Jackson Historic District, and it is distinctly unique. And it should be treated with the, with the upgrade of material, but it should not mimic what central business is. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Elizabeth.
Um, so uh. I, I don't see anybody uh raising their hand or anything on the materials. Um, I, I would, I would think, yeah, Frida, Frida. Sorry.
I just raised my hands because I remember initially when we were discussing this. Um, we were planning on using similar materials in different sta- different size bricks. On the Witherspoon Jackson size because of the trees, more trees, more roots, et cetera. And at that point, I was very curious as to what, what Shirley would say. And I guess we have two other people who live in that area, so I would love to hear what you guys think about that. Um, you know, if we're, if we're changing the materials, what would you wanna see? Between asphalt and and cement, is that what you're saying? Oh, you have a choice. I mean, what would you? I'd rather see cement. Asphalt is too much like the streets. Mm-hmm, yeah, of course. Would you wanna see similar pavers to what's in Phase One? Because our thought, without people who live in the area, our thought was that you didn't want to. Uh we didn't want to make the Witherspoon Jackson area so different from the rest of Witherspoon Street. You know, because I I've heard, and this is just from rumors, I've never lived in in that area, but um that. At at some point, people thought that 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 section of town was overlooked, so you don't want it to look so different, but yet. You wanted to retain its character, so you know, let us know what you. It was overlooked until um it became a different hue in Princeton and uh. And it is becoming uh an an area where it's, it's a walkable area, but we've always walked. Um, so I don't know, I have to see um. It it has to be different because it has to adjust to what we want in this community, but I understand what you mean about not being too different. But we want it to reflect our history. So then would it make sense for Deanna to 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 give you some samples or some rendering, some ideas, some pictures? That's what we would need, yeah, yeah. And Leighton has something to say also.
Oh, sure, go ahead, Leighton.
Uh I uh thank, thank you for for the question, um Ms. Howard. Uh, I I'm nowhere near a designer or architectural person. But just the the, to to answer your question and generally speaking. My my vision is certainly it is not the Central Business District. It is a very, an extremely unique and historical neighborhood. And you know, having been and lived in the Boston area and and knowing the likes of sort of Charles Street. And the historic section of Boston and and looking through several areas in New York City, which are historic sections. Even in Washington DC, you know, the the feel when you're in a historic section is really, really, really. Really very special. And you know, certainly the history of the Witherspoon Jackson. Neighborhood should be reflected and respected, but. I I also have a vision that that, and and again, this would be for design people. That it can be updated and upgraded. Uh, uh we we we, well-designed and and contemporized, if you will. You know, I mean, it 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 should look historical, but historically, even in the report. Uh the Wise Report, it said vernacular. And you know, vernacular kind of is a helter-skelter me- meaning. So I think that the 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 landscape, I think, and and the streetscape and the feel, when when you cross Paul Robeson. Should be distinctly different, but oh my God, how well distinctively different it should be done. And that, and I would leave that up to the design professionals and the architectural professionals. But Witherspoon Jackson should be, as they say, in 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 the urban vernacular, really off the hook. It should be something really special because. It should be something really special because you know what? It is something really special.
Right, thank you. I know Michael has his hand up and then Frida has their hand up.
Yeah, to to that question, I I remember about a month ago. A few of us walked with with staff on a Saturday and that question came up. And most, if not all, were very impressed with. The uh materials used by Bob Hillier uh in front of his place. Um uh so that did come up. I just wanna mention that we were very impressed in how that looked, or most of us were.
And also, every corner from Paul Robeson Place down to Birch Avenue is a historic corner. I'd said that once before. And uh I think we need to keep that history and be proud of the history. And that's why those plaques are there, but even without the plaques, we need to keep the history of this area.
Also, I just wanna wanna say to echo what uh. Michael Floyd just said, uh it is absolutely true. I think that to to a person, everyone that was on that. Walk would have no problem if the entirety of the uh. The the part, the part two of Witherspoon Street uh was not dissimilar to what Bob Hillier's done in front of his his location.
Right.
Okay, great. Well, thank you.
Thank you. I I think that's a lot of uh feedback for you guys. And maybe um at some point, we can see mockups or something like that, but um if there isn't anything else. Then that's it, right?
You're not done yet.
That's it for today.
Nope, we've got the Nassau streetscape unfortunately to go through um quickly, hopefully for you.
Seven o'clock, so.
Yes. I I hear you. Alright, I'm gonna share my screen one more time. Tejal, feel free to go home if uh. Uh or to uh turn off from us, thank you.
I was just about dressed that question. Do you need me? Thank you so much for meeting. Thank you so much.
Alright, so here we go. Okay, so um I think it was back in two thousand sixteen seventeen, we worked. To create guidelines for Nassau Street. And at the time, let me see if I can get through here. So we worked, L R K was the design consultant that the municipality hired. We had various representatives from different groups since, including HPC. To look at the streetscape on um Nassau Street from Bayard to Moore Street. And um give us some design ideas of how to improve. The uh probably approaching forty-year-old streetscape that exists now. So looking at um the area, we've got some sidewalks that are wider, others that are narrower. So we're looking at two different zones, the the furnishing zone and the throughway zone. Furnishing zone would be where you have your street trees, your benches, um maybe some dining, other. Things like your parking meters, your uh newspaper boxes, and then you have the throughway zone. Whether it's more than sixteen feet wide or less than sixteen feet wide, you're still looking at uh the two zones. And um the original recommendation was to be all pavers. Two different size pavers. In um I think it was like a gray color. We came to HPC um in two thousand and eighteen to review. Sorry, this quality is kind of of uh bad, but to look at this design. The the feedback was that we're looking for something in a gray color. Some people didn't want different sized pavers, some didn't want um brick pavers. Talked about keeping it um pretty simple. So that it doesn't detract from the businesses and the the buildings themselves. So we had a a variety of different feedback that came back that was sent to Shippo. As we work through the process, talking with DOT, we found that DOT. Um that pavers are not a standard material for Department of Transportation. And the Department of Transportation is the underlying landowner for these sidewalks, so um. And obviously, there is a higher cost in putting pavers, so. One thought, or when we look to actually move a project forward. We um amended through a council resolution what the streetscape. Um recommendation for materials and pattern would be. Um so we were still looking at the two zones, the furnishing zone, the throughway zone. Um keeping similar dimensions, the six foot to eight foot furnishing zone. And then the throughway zone, um which would be at least eight feet. And in this case, it, we switched the materials to a tinted concrete. With a cool gray color, as noted, we um. It it's a different gray than was chosen for the Bank Street project, and I'll show you that in a slide. Uh this is called landmark gray, Bank Street. As well as this existing concrete on on Nassau Street is a French gray. So um you'll see on my other slide how the color varies after forty years. Um but this is basically what we came up with um in the detail. And then we had the six-foot tree wells, uh which are a natural iron. Which will oxidize to a darker color and not stay the orange, just so you know. But after the construction was done, we've had some feedback that it is. It's just too too monotone, too simple. Uh that we should look at something else, and one solution would be. To replace what's in this furnishing zone with another material, and so. One idea that came up is to look at using the same pavers. That we would be using on Nassau Street in that furnishing zone. So you do have an example in town where it is set up somewhat similar. To the two different materials, and that's on Wholefish Street. Where they have the brick pavers in the furnishing zone, and then they have a concrete throughway zone. These images, the of the two gray pavers, um that is more similar to the. The pavers that we will be using on Witherspoon Street, just so you get a sense of color. Because this this red brick really does kind of stand out a lot differently. The gray that's shown here at the corner, um I think this is the French gray. That um is also used on Bank Street. So a- again, this shows you that difference after forty years, how the color changes. So one thing that we wanted to point out too is that. The sidewalk cross slope on Nassau Street is not ADA compliant. You know, two percent maximum cross slope is what you need to have. In some places, it's at least five percent. So again, distinguishing a furnishing zone from a throughway zone helps us. Correct the slope, and so what what um. We did on Bank Street, or I'm sorry, on Nassau Street at Bank Street. Is we, in the throughway zone, we kept it as a two percent cross slope. And made up the grade difference on either side where. In on, in that situation, we left the frontage zone alone. Because it's also private property, so we didn't, we didn't um have the. Chance to go through and work with the property owners to get authorization to remove the concrete right in front of the buildings. But in the furnishing zone, we made a steeper slope to make up for that grade difference. Uh there was some discussion of can you go back to the diamond pattern? Um instead of using more rectilinear pattern on the sidewalk. Well, if you're working with some of these dimensions and you're working on on different cross slopes. The diamond pattern is a little more challenging to put in place and have it look consistent. Um it it definitely lends itself to more of a consistent cross slope. So just to to bring you back, this is, this is the sidewalk treatment that we did at Bank Street. As I noted, Bank Street is a French gray. What we put on Nassau Street is landmark gray. The idea is that it would be. Uh a little bit darker color. But it it is just interesting to note that what we have on Bank Street is the same as what. Is existing on Witherspoon Street. It's just had forty years of aging. Because that was one thing we heard is, well, why can't we just use the same tan color that's out there? And it's not quite the, you know, it wasn't tan when it was first put in, it was more gray and it's aged over time. So we're looking for feedback if there is a sense that um that we wanna go back through. And and change the streetscape and replace the material. For example, in the furnishing zones, there was an idea of trying to put a color stain. Over the dark gray to make it look like something different. Um or, you know, ultimately, replace everything with different color palette. So uh that's why we're here today is to see. What feedback we can get from HPC, and I unfortunately, I do have to put. A um a a a note in that this is. A very time-sensitive process because Department of Transportation will be building a portion of this when. Uh they replace the traffic signal at Witherspoon Street this summer fall. So they do need the answers. We also have the Graduate Hotel who will be replacing the section from Bank Street to Chamber Street. Uh so they also need to know, and also. The idea was we were going to carry some of these same design features at the Triumph Brewery on Palmer Square East. Which again is looking to be completed with construction sometime um September to November, so. We we seek your guidance because we will have to go make a quick turnaround with Shippo on this.
And Deanna, could you outline again uh the possibilities? One possibility is replacing that section with pavers. Is that correct?
That is one possibility, yes, is to replace this eight-foot wide section. From the curb to the throughway zone with pavers. That, like I said, um would also require some work with the Department of Transportation because. Pavers are not a standard material in their right-of-way, so we would have to work for um approval on that.
The the possibility of adding um a stain to the concrete in that area. Is is that another possibility or no?
I think that was discussed, right? Are you there still, Jim? That was one of the things.
I I'm, I try not to put my own opinions into these discussions, but. That's not, that that won't last.
Okay.
Labor-intensive.
It's labor-intensive and it and and it'll get blotchy over time and you won't like it a couple of years from now.
Right. So, so it's either rip it out and put in another shade of concrete. Or rip it out and put in pavers.
Yes.
Not, or not rip it out at all in this section.
Okay.
For now, but you know, this is for for the future.
Going forward, right.
Going forward from Bank Street to the uh to the east. All the way through. What what do we wanna do? What do we wanna see? And if everybody likes that, then we come back and we can take care of this section.
Right.
At a later date.
And I will say, in the future, we would work and get right-of entries from property owners to to replace the material. Right up to the building, so you don't have the different color. But like I said, we just didn't have that opportunity in this project.
Alright, we don't need it in the next block and we don't need it. In the next block either, because our right-of-way, or the DOT right-of-way goes to the building line.
Right.
Yeah.
I see. Alright, well, especially I'd like to hear from from David and Frida, who are on the subcommittee. What they think.
I'm wondering whether in the um. The area, what do you call the area where the furnishing area?
Furnishing zone, yeah.
Furnishing zone. I'm wondering if you could use, um you know, we looked at a darker paver, like almost a black, but it wasn't black. I wonder if you could use something like that, even if you, you know, had a colored concrete or. I don't know what's less expensive or is money, or if money is not an object. But I think a darker color might look nice and it would look elegant. I I don't know. What what do you think, David?
I I could go with a darker color for sure, but I I still like the idea of simplicity, so. I guess I'd like to see a darker concrete, but not a darker paver.
I think either way, because with the furnishings on that, you know, there are so many things on top of that surface. I don't think you'll be noticing the actual material or pattern. But I I think the color might be more important. The color is more important, I think.
So then if it's a, if it's um a victory to be won. And a battle that Deanna would have to go and and try and get the pavers approved. Why don't we just say darker concrete in that zone? Wouldn't that make things easier and um let you plan better?
It would be easier, um I think. Uh I got the sense that they they did not like this gray. I forget what it was.
Can I jump in? I wasn't the impression that it was just sort of the plainness of just having. Gray concrete, that there was no sort of more visual interest to it. Staff has been thinking, probably the last thing we wanna do downtown is introduce yet another color paver, which is different than other pavers. And yet another color tint of sidewalk. If we could maybe stay with this color tint concrete and maybe use the pavers that we're introducing on Witherspoon Street. That sort of ties everything together in one district. You know, the downtown is one district. I don't know how many different elements and colors you wanna keep introducing.
I think it's how many elements of of. Materials. I I think that we all wanted something very simple.
Right, simple is, I agree, Scott, simple.
That's good.
Well, if I may, one of one of the benefits of of putting in the pavers is that we then have the permeability issue. And it can help to sustain the the trees. So if we go with a the paver like we have on Witherspoon Street, it's the same. Situation.
You know, what's nice too is that it makes, when Witherspoon comes to Nassau, it makes that transition.
Transition better.
I think we're getting many materials. I I think we've been trying to say for a number of years now, simple, simple, simple. And that, yes, we've dressed up Witherspoon Street because we're saying that's a special zone, blah, blah, blah. But I I think that, I think that the, I think we're getting um material or design creep coming through. What we've already kind of tried to establish as what we thought was the most appropriate look from a historic preservation point of view.
I think also um. That's in my work, a lot of people cannot vis- visualize, so we do a lot of photoshopping. I think that would be a real simple and easy way for us to be able to see it. I mean, it's easy to to. for us to be able to see it. I mean, it's easy to 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 take a picture of say Nassau Street and, you know, Photoshop in different materials just for color, just to see how it goes, how it looks with the building. I think that that would be a very helpful exercise to make sure that we do keep it simple. And we don't have to do break in any kind of pattern, it's just for the color.
Yeah.
I mean, not break up favors.
Probably what's drawing to people and and it did catch us off guard is um, that the tree grates with their oxidation process is kind of a bright ugly looking thing.
At least it's orange, that's Princetonian.
Well, that's true.
If you put a black around it, it'll be even more Princeton.
Good point.
May I ask a clarifying question about the furnishing zone and the grading that is required? Did I understand correctly that to make this sidewalk ADA compliant, we must now pitch to sixty eight degrees, the furnishing zone towards the street?
It it depends on each situation based on the height of the doorways at the businesses. So we we, we're trying to find the right balance to get our two percent cross slope in for the throughway zone and and balance off, balance out the slope on the other two sides. Again, if we can go all the way to the doorway in other stretches, then that gives us a little more opportunity to balance it out. But yes, I mean, there is some sort of a a slope difference you can feel.
This generates the question, uh, did I further understand correctly that in the furnishing zone, we might expect restaurants that have outdoor seating to be putting their seating into the furnishing zone or would they keep it close to the frontage zone? Or both?
I think, I think the way the design guidelines laid it out is that it could be in both. It could be both right along the building. Um, and it could be along the curb depending on the location and the business.
So would this suggest that a place like PJ's, just to take an example, would have to widen or narrow the throughway zone in order to comply with what the new design might be?
Uh, I think, I think that would widen, would, they would have to widen the throughway zone. And we're actually looking at updating the sidewalk cafe ordinance. Just to see if there are updates. Sidewalk Cafe Ordinance right now has the throughway zone, I think it's six feet.
Okay, so this raises two thoughts then. One is we don't want this sidewalk to turn into I ninety five for pedestrians, right? There is a certain quaintness and charm, uh, even if people have to, you know, shrink it down to seven feet, so be aware of that. But more importantly, for those vendors who then set up their outdoor seating in the furnishing zone that's pitched at six degrees or more, then that's going to create a problem for the setting of those furnitures, would it not? In which case, would that force them to have to consider building platforms to level out their seating?
I mean, that'd be allowed.
I don't think so. I think they're, you know, they could level out the tables.
And let's, let's put it this way, they don't seem to have any problem on on the current block between John Street and Palmer Square. And that, and Chamber Street, and that is already steep. It's not ADA compliant. It's actually one of the difficulties we're having. Graduate Hotel is actually having it, trying to actually create a two percent zone through here because it is so steep from the building to the curb.
Right.
Um, so they are, they are already at a
And there, there's furniture out there on Chamber Street, is there?
Yeah, there.
Jam and Creps.
Jam and Creps, you've got
Sacred Coffee.
That grid, yeah.
Sacred Coffee.
Yep.
Those are all Nassau, not Chamber.
Yeah, that's what I meant from.
From Bank to Chambers.
I thought Tom asked about Chamber Street itself.
Yeah, so it is the Nassau Street portion between Bank and Chambers, I'm with you.
Yes, and that is, that is very steep. Yeah.
The the alternative is you raise.
They're not turning over on the tables.
The alternative is you raise the curb up, but then you can't chase it forever. You get to a point where the curb is so high that people can't open their car doors. If they're parallel parked, so that's, that's why it's this retrofit.
Nassau Street Olympics, we could do high jumps.
Yeah, it's not an easy street to design and get and make ADA compliant.
Well, right, and if you let people be in the throughway zone for the cafe, then people, aren't they walking on the worst, supposedly the worst slope for for ADA compliance?
I mean, as long as we have five feet of free throughway, we're covered. And and that is and if you look at PJ's Pancake House, they do encroach on the throughway zone, if you will. But there's still enough for ADA compliance. Um, but as Deanna said, we have to look at our outdoor dining ordinance and make sure that that is covered. That there, during COVID, we've allowed so I call it dining table creep.
Latitude is the word.
Yes, I mean, right now our ordinance doesn't allow you to put tables at the curb. It only allows you to go a certain number of feet from the building frontage. So that, that's why we're just doing a holistic overview, especially to with the Witherspoon Street changes with the sidewalk getting so much larger. We wanted to look at all of that. All right, so back to the simple or.
Back to the, back to the um, initiate, the initial complaint. Was it store owners who were complaining that it looked too plain? Or what, where was the source? Elizabeth, do you want to talk?
Yeah, so I I went to that site meeting where we walked and so I don't know if you've been to that section from Bayard to Bank Street. So it actually is pretty, it it's it's not attractive for a street improvement, honestly. It has a finish which I wouldn't have done to that sidewalk, which makes it actually look cheap. Not even industrial, but cheap.
I I raised that and remember that was all about a safety concern. The the brush cut or whatever you call it.
It's, it's not good. It it looks bad. Unfortunately, they only did one section. You know, that at least it was an opportunity to see what was done and then that that now there's an opportunity to improve it. So I think that with Deanna and Deanna, correct me if I'm wrong, what she's saying is it doesn't necessarily have to be changing the color or retaining concrete. You can change the pattern if you feel that that's better, you can change the material. So I think that she's kind of opening it up for HPC to give, you know, really good suggestions for this to be a streetscape improvement, because right now it really doesn't look good, honestly. And I don't know if it's because, if you look there, it looks very monochromatic. It looks like nothing. I mean, it could have been anywhere.
Elizabeth, just just to clarify, original question I think that Julie asked. Did this come from someone else or from you? Was this your?
Oh, no, no, this was not HPC, Deanna. I'm gonna.
It was a council member. I'll take the hit, everybody. It was a council member.
I was gonna, I was gonna name the council member, Deanna.
To 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 their credit, I mean, this is a time to make an improvement, you know.
All right.
Instead of just saying, oh, well, we already approved of things like that, this is an opportunity to make it a really nice design and to see what, you know, what we don't want. You know, and for those people who haven't had an opportunity, they should go out there. I have to say that that rumble strip over Bank Street, that picture does not do it justice. But it turned out really great.
Thank you, thank you.
But but I have to say, but but the the concrete is just, I don't know if it's because maybe the ground should be a different color. You know, to give some distinction, but it's just like a big block of concrete.
The finish wasn't great and the joints aren't great. We will admit that. We we, after we saw that, we went back and are looking at different joint material that can be used so that you don't have like the big felt in there. So yes, we we get that. Workmanship was poor, so yes, but please, any, any feedback, please.
So I think the commission kind of has a carte blanche at this point to say, hey, listen, you know, maybe we should go back to those those brick pavers that we originally saw the first time around. You know, maybe that the pattern should be different, but I think that what the HPC also should consider is how it integrates with the streets that it's going to intersect. That material and color, how does it intersect with Bank, with Witherspoon Street? You know, all the, all the streets is going to start intersect, intersecting with.
Yeah, Elric, Elric wants to talk, okay.
Yeah, I just, I can't believe I'm saying this actually. Because I remember when the, when Barbara Sigmund was put in the diagonal sidewalks and and one of the people who was an advocate for it and very much against the alternative was Connie Greif, and the alternative was brick. But I'm looking at the photographs and and starting from, from um, Fired Lane to Bank Street, you've got the the brick wall in front of of the
Palmer House.
Robert Stockton House. You've got the, you've got the, the old banks, the bank at the corner of Bank Street, you have what's going to become the hotel. The Martian, where the, where Marshes used to be, I don't know what's there now. And then all of Palmer Square and whenever, and it's, and it is warmer and it and it sort of sets off differences between the functions that you're you're discussing here. As I said, I can't believe I'm saying it, but I, but I, but I, looking at those photographs you were showing, it seemed like it should at least be under consideration.
Well, like Frida said, maybe we could get it photoshopped, just Photoshop the Witherspoon paper and then Photoshop some brick and see, you know, how it looks.
I hate to bring this up, but we had suggested initially break for Witherspoon Street. And it was changed. So I'm gonna say, I'm just gonna say that because we weren't consulted and it was totally changed, so. Just saying.
I just, I ju, I don't know. I think that there was consensus. I thought that everybody wanted it to be.
No, you guys decided in your department and then told us that you had changed it for simplicity. I don't ever forget things like that because we had spent a lot of time selecting it and making suggestions and it was changed on us.
Oh, that's right, because council wanted all one color consistently so that it looked, could be a pedestrian space.
So, so maybe, I I mean, is this helpful if we could? We're certainly, it sounds like, open to considering another material just because it sounds like the, just only having concrete is not really good. I mean, according to Elizabeth, it's really not looking good and we don't want to go ahead with something that just doesn't look good. So if we could at least see a Photoshop or a mockup or something, that would probably help a lot.
Justin and Michael, do you guys still have Photoshop? I know Eileen used to have it. I I was attempting to do my own little Photoshop and it was not working.
Yeah, we're engineers. We don't know how to do that fancy stuff.
There was like Photoshop two thousand and two in a box in my office. I don't know if it, uh, the license still work. I do know, uh, the public library has it.
Oh, you guys don't, wow.
We don't.
Oh, yeah, I do. I mean, I use it every day. But um, do you guys have a marketing department in?
Can you tell by what we put together?
Yeah, what about Tejel's office? Are they involved with that project or?
They are not. No, they don't have Photoshop either, really, yeah.
No, we've asked them for renderings before and it's a, it's a real chore. They're an engineering firm too. We need, we need a landscape architecture firm to, to really do the right thing.
Some contract that out, I mean.
Yeah.
Maybe Justin and Michael can get Photoshop and they can help us.
Samples, if we can get any samples and just lay it out on the street.
Exactly.
You could meet there.
Yeah.
Elric, a historic question about the concrete, just to keep it relevant to history. When was concrete first laid as the sidewalk for Nassau Street? And was it concrete? Do we know? I was addressing that to Elric, are you there?
Elric?
I'm sorry, I missed, it was like question directly to me, I didn't get it.
Yeah, Tom here, I'm just checking in with you from the history point of view. Do we know what was the original sidewalk of Nassau Street and of what it was composed? When it was laid?
I, you're coming in and out, um, long distance here, but in, as far as Nassau Street is concerned, it was it was a dirt street until about nineteen sixteen, I think. And um, it seems to me Jim Sein's father was part of that. In any event, it was paved with wooden blocks. The street itself was wood. And um, anyway, that some of you have heard this story before, but I can't resist. There was, there was a, Nassau Street was deserted during the summer. It really, they they would move houses up and down the street because there was no traffic. In any event, the there was a touring car that arrived one day. This is after the street had been paved, but farmers are still coming in on with their horses. And so they had hired a young man to clean the street after the horses. And this woman had heard her driver pull up next to him, asking where the battlefield was and where the you know, the various points of historic interest and he didn't really comprehend what was going on. And she, she finally said, I told you this was some little one horse town. He said, lady, if you followed me around all day, you wouldn't say so.
Very good.
All right, so, well, any, any chance for a mockup would be excellent.
Deanna, do you have any material left over from the original design that if, you know, if we don't get a Photoshop that we could lay out on the ground and look at, take photographs? Do you have those brick pavers or anything like that or any that, no?
Well, you mean the stuff that L R K had when we had the public meetings or?
Laid it out of Bank Street.
Did he, I I don't know, I didn't go to the public meetings when they had it at the Garden Theater.
Right.
Did he have, did he have brick paper samples?
He had samples, but nothing was ever left with us. I think he had to return them. So no, we really don't have anything.
Okay, but I assume that we could get samples, right?
Can I say something? I I think more important than samples is um, actual installations in our climate. I mean, all of these materials come with a lot of trouble. And it'd be interesting to see a a town and, you know, somewhat in our same climate and size. What has worked well, what has held up well, and how it really looks installed. Our putting down bricks and walking over them in the downtown isn't really gonna, gonna tell us that much. And and just that's, I guess, why I like the the simple and the concrete so much, because I've seen so many towns. Where I've been called in to to look at things and, you know, all these fancy materials, they just don't seem to get installed or look the look you think you're gonna get. And then the whole thing with the repairs and the you know, Tom's comment earlier, if the state Capitol with its beautiful brick on, what is that? Warren Street, whatever street that is, if they can't maintain it, you know. It it just, don't give yourself a headache. Is, I guess, what I want to say. And back to the council person, I guess a woman, I guess they're all women, except for Mark. Not liking our simple design, you know, we are charged with something which, oh, sorry, Leighton. We are, we are charged with um, with what the Historic Preservation Commission is supposed to do. And after a lot of work, we came up with that design. If the installation and the, and the If the installation and the and the actual pouring of the concrete wasn't that good, or the color was off a little bit. I I I just don't know why we do all this work to have someone say it could be prettier or we should integrate with all these other. Twenty first century surfaces we're putting in. I mean, we're just gonna change the town a lot. And 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 make it into something that's. That it's not at a great expense.
Well, I think we should all go by, take a look, get some ideas and then, you know, email Elizabeth and. You know, we can go from there, but let's all go to the site, take a look and think about it.
That's our block. I mean, I'm on that block all the time, not that our office is open yet, but I'm in that area a lot. And I get it, it's kind of dull, but I didn't like the the surface on on the day they poured it, as you all remember me sending. Emails out going, what's going on? And then being corrected by, I don't know if it was Public Works or Engineering or somebody saying, that's what it had to be.
Okay, well, I think, you know, we're gonna kind of leave it at that and see what see what happens, but. Thanks for bringing it up. Okay, is there anything else? Because we're we're almost at seven o'clock, so really time to go.
No, thank you. We appreciate all the time you spent here today and going through all of these different topics with us. This is very helpful.
Oh, thank you. Well, thanks for running it by us. We always appreciate that. Alright, so we'll see everybody soon. Thanks again for the second meeting this week. We really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Bye, bye. Do we need an adjournment or anything?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, motion to adjourn, Roger, second.
Elric second.
Elric, okay, bye, guys. Thank you so much. Done. Seven hours of meetings, I think we're done for March. Okay, thank you.
Bye bye.
Bye.
Bye, Elric.
See you next week.
Okay, oh, yeah, you're back next week? I love it.
Yeah, I may be coming back down here in April.
Really? Oh, oh, you mean because of the property?
Yes. Two design projects, so we'll see.
Did you find someone to do your property designation?
The design, the the design projects, one is at Playa Grande where I did all those buildings years ago. But the other one is a new cafe and my guys are making all this.